Good evening. My name is Joellen Bynum, and I'm the Grants Manager for the City of Salisbury. Welcome to our second public hearing for the City of Salisbury's 2024 Program Year for the Community Development Block Grant Program. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building. If the doors are locked, please exit through the doors to my right by pulling the fire alarm located to the right of the door under the monitor. Please let us know if you should need assistance. This year, our planning process includes the development of a new five-year consolidated plan, the 2024 Action Plan, and a new analysis of impediments to Fair Housing Choice, or AI. These are documents that all entitlement communities are required to produce according to the regulations of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in order to be eligible for CDBG funds. To assist us in our planning process this year, we contracted with Urban Design Ventures, a consultant group from Homestead, Pennsylvania. I will begin by providing an overview of the goals and strategies outlined in the new consolidated plan. The City of Salisbury has prepared its five-year consolidated plan for the period of program year 2024, which begins July 1, 2024, through program year 2028, ending June 30, 2028. The consolidated plan is a strategic plan to implement federal programs for housing and community development activities within the City of Salisbury that will principally benefit low- and moderate-income individuals. The consolidated plan is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG. This plan must be completed by the entitlement community every five years in conjunction with an update to the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, or AI. The consolidated plan establishes the current needs identified in the City of Salisbury and proposes goals and specific initiatives the city will undertake to address these needs by encouraging the development of decent housing, promoting a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities. The consolidated plan is a collaborative planning process between the city, the community at large, social service agencies, housing providers, community development groups, and economic development agencies. The process was implemented through a series of public and stakeholder meetings, surveys, statistical data, and reviews of previous community development plans. The purpose of the consolidated plan is to serve as a consolidated planning document, an application for CDBG funds, and a strategic plan for the City of Salisbury. The City of Salisbury's Program Year 2024 through 2028 Consolidated Plan proposes the following six strategies to address the priority needs in the city. Number one, housing strategy priority need. There is a need for decent, safe, accessible, and affordable housing. Under this priority need, the goals are: homeownership; increase the supply of owner-occupied housing units through housing counseling and down payment slash closing cost assistance; housing construction; encourage the construction of new accessible and affordable housing units in the city for owners and renters; housing rehabilitation; conserve and rehabilitate existing affordable housing units for owners and renters in the city by addressing maintenance issues, code violations, emergency repairs, and handicap accessibility. The second priority need is homeless strategy. There is a need for housing and supportive services for the homeless, those at risk of homelessness, and victims of domestic violence. The goals under this priority need are: housing; support the continuum of CARES efforts to provide emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and other permanent housing options; and operation and support; assist partners operating housing or providing supportive services for the homeless and those at risk of becoming homeless. Number three, other special needs strategy priority need. There is a need for services and facilities for persons with special needs. The goals under this strategy are: services and facilities; support supportive service programs and facilities for the elderly, persons with disabilities, persons with HIV, AIDS, persons with alcohol or drug dependency, and persons with other special needs. Number four, community development strategy priority need. There is a need to improve the community facilities, infrastructure, public services, and quality of life in the City of Salisbury. Under this priority need, we have the goals of: community facilities and infrastructure; improve the city's public facilities and infrastructure through rehabilitation, reconstruction, and new construction; public safety and services; improve and enhance public safety, public services, and recreational programs; connectivity; improve connectivity within the city and to surrounding communities through physical, visual, transportation, and accessibility improvements; clearance and demolition; address and eliminate slum and blighting conditions throughout the city. Number five, economic development strategy priority need. There is a need to encourage employment and economic opportunities in the City of Salisbury. Under the economic development strategy, we have goals of employment; support and encourage job creation, job retention, and job training opportunities; development; support business and commercial growth through expansion and new development; redevelopment; plan and promote the development, redevelopment, and revitalization of vacant commercial and industrial sites; financial assistance; support and encourage new economic development through local, state, and federal tax incentives and programs such as tax incremental financing, tax abatements, payment in lieu of taxes, enterprise zones, entitlement communities, Section 108 loan guarantees, and economic development initiative funds; access to transportation; support the expansion of public transportation and access to bus and automobile service to assist residents' transportation needs for employment and job training opportunities. Number six, administration, planning, and management strategy priority need. There is a need for planning, administration, management, and oversight of federal, state, and locally funded programs. Under this strategy, we have the goal of overall coordination; provide program management and oversight for the successful administration of federal, state, and local funded programs, including planning services for special studies, environmental clearance, fair housing activities, and compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. The consolidated plan document for program year 2024 through 2028 includes the 2024 Action Plan, which outlines the project which the city intends to fund with its 2024 CDBG allocation. The city estimates that its CDBG award for program year 2024 will be $363,857. The city plans to fund the following three projects with the 2024 CDBG funds. Project number one, Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County: Critical Home Repairs. The target area is citywide for low-to-moderate-income residents. This supports Goal HS3, Housing Rehabilitation, and the need that will be addressed is housing need. The CDBG funding amount is estimated to be $145,543. This project will provide critical home repairs for low- and moderate-income owner-occupied housing units, with a target completion date of June 30, 2025, and the location being citywide with an estimated 17 low-to-moderate-income households as estimated beneficiaries. The national objective met by this project will be LMH, Low-Mod Housing Benefit. Project number two for program year 2024. The project name is Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services Owner-Occupied Housing Rehabilitation, with a target area of citywide low-to-moderate-income. Goals supported will be Housing Rehabilitation, HS3, and this project will address housing need. The CDBG funding estimate for this project is $145,543. This project will provide critical home repairs for low- and moderate-income owner-occupied housing units. The target completion date is June 30, 2025, with a citywide location. Estimated beneficiaries under this project will be seven low-to-moderate-income households. The national objective that will be met is the low-to-moderate housing. Project number three, CDBG Program Administration. Target area for this is citywide with the goal supported of overall coordination. The needs addressed will be administration, planning, and management needs. The CDBG funding amount is estimated to be $72,771, and this project will provide management and oversight of the city's CDBG program. The target completion date is June 30, 2025, with estimated beneficiaries 30,570 persons, which is the City of Salisbury's approximate population. This project's home base will be in the Finance Department at the City of Salisbury, 125 North Division Street, Number 103 Salisbury. As of this date, the city has not received notification from HUD as to the amount of its allocation for program year 2024. Final allocations to the outlined projects will be determined upon the city's notification by HUD of the resources we have been allotted for program year 2024. Twenty percent of the official allocation will be assigned to program administration, and the remaining eighty percent will be split evenly between the two housing rehabilitation program projects. The second document that the city must complete every five years is the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, or AI. This document is updated in conjunction with the consolidated plan. Following is an overview of the city's 2024 AI. In accordance with the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, each entitlement community must affirmatively further fair housing. In order to demonstrate that the entitlement community is affirmatively furthering fair housing, each community must conduct a fair housing analysis, which identifies any impediments to fair housing choice, and what steps it will take to address those impediments. The 2024 AI will be submitted in concurrence with the submission of the city's 2024 through 2028 Consolidated Plan to bring the two planning documents into sequence. This fair housing analysis focuses on the status and interaction of six fundamental conditions within the City of Salisbury. The sale or rental of dwellings, private or public; the provision of housing brokerage services; the provision of financial assistance for dwellings; public policies and actions affecting the approval of sites and other building requirements used in the approval process for the construction of publicly assisted housing; the administrative policies concerning community development and housing activities which affect opportunities of minority households to select housing inside or outside areas of minority concentration; and where there is a determination of unlawful segregation or other housing discrimination by a court or a finding of noncompliance by HUD regarding assisted housing in a recipient's jurisdiction; an analysis of the actions which could be taken by the recipient to remedy the discriminatory condition, including actions involving the expenditure of funds made available under 24 CFR Part 570. The Fair Housing Act was originally passed in 1968 to protect buyers and renters from discrimination from sellers and landlords by making it unlawful to refuse the sale or rental of a property to persons included under the category of a protected class. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination against persons based on their race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status in the sale, rental, and financing of housing. The City of Salisbury's Program Year 2024 through 2028 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice has identified the following impediments, as well as defined specific goals and strategies to address each impediment. Impediment number one, fair housing education and outreach. There is a need to improve the knowledge and understanding concerning the rights and responsibilities of individuals, families, members of the protected classes, landlords, real estate professionals, and public officials under the Fair Housing Act. The goal is to improve the public's knowledge and awareness of the Fair Housing Act, related laws, regulations, and requirements to affirmatively further fair housing in the community. In order to meet this goal, the following activities and strategies should be undertaken. Number one, A: Educate residents, realtors, bankers, housing providers, other real estate professionals, policymakers, and municipal staff of their responsibilities under the fair housing and related statutes, regulations, and executive orders. One B: Support fair housing organizations and legal advocacy groups to assist persons who may be victims of housing discrimination. One C: Identify the language and communication needs of limited English proficiency, or LEP, persons, to provide the specific language assistance that is required. Impediment number two, the need for affordable housing. In the City of Salisbury, one out of every two or 52% of the renter households is paying over 30% of their monthly income on housing cost. One out of every four or 24% of the owner-occupied households with a mortgage is paying over 30% of their monthly income on housing cost. And one out of every six or 16% of owner households without a mortgage is spending over 30% of their monthly income on housing cost. The goal under this impediment will be to increase the supply of decent, safe, and sanitary housing that is affordable and accessible through the new construction and rehabilitation of various types of housing, especially housing that is affordable to lower-income households. In order to meet this goal, the following activities and strategies should be undertaken. Two A: Support and encourage private developers and nonprofit housing providers to create, through construction or rehabilitation, affordable mixed-income housing. Two B: Support and encourage the rehabilitation of existing renter-occupied and owner-occupied housing units in the city for households below 80% of the area median income. Two C: Support homebuyer education, training programs, and closing cost down payment assistance to increase the number of owner-occupied housing units, especially in response to HMDA data discrimination patterns to support higher loan-to-value ratios for minority homebuyers. Two D: Support tenant education and maintenance training programs to encourage and support healthy rental units. Two E: Encourage organizations serving the LMI community to develop relationships with landlords to expand the supply of affordable rental housing units. Two F: Encourage affirmative marketing procedures to attract protected classes that are least likely to apply for new affordable housing opportunities. Identified impediment number three is the need for accessible housing. There is a lack of accessible housing units in the City of Salisbury, as the supply of accessible housing has not kept pace with the demand of individuals desiring to live independently. The goal is to increase the supply of accessible housing by new construction and rehabilitation of accessible housing for persons who are disabled. In order to meet this goal, the following activities and strategies should be undertaken. Three A: Promote the need for accessible and visitable housing by supporting and encouraging private developers and nonprofits to develop, construct, and/or rehabilitate housing that is accessible to persons with disabilities. Three B: Provide financial assistance for accessibility improvements to owner-occupied housing units to enable seniors and persons with disabilities to remain in their home. Three C: Promote and encourage the ADA and fair housing requirements for landlords to make reasonable accommodations to their rental properties so the units are accessible to tenants. Impediment number four, public policy. The city zoning ordinance needs additional definitions and provisions to affirmatively further fair housing. The goal is to revise the city zoning ordinance to promote the development of various types of affordable housing throughout the city. In order to meet this goal, the following activities and strategies should be undertaken. Four A: Revise the city zoning ordinance to include additional definitions, statements, and revisions that adopt model fair housing zoning provisions, including reasonable accommodations, transit-oriented development, and regional cooperation. Four B: Develop incentives to encourage developers and housing providers to offer more affordable housing options in the city. Four C: Encourage low-moderate-income minority and protected-class resident participation in the various city boards and commissions. Impediment number five, regional approach to fair housing. There is a need for a regional collaborative approach to affirmatively furthering fair housing in the area. The goal is to form a regional cooperative fair housing consortiums to affirmatively further fair housing. In order to meet this goal, the following actions should be undertaken. Five A: Form a regional fair housing partnership with existing organizations to encourage fair housing choice throughout the area, fair housing activities, and projects. Five B: Maintain a regional database of decent, safe, and sanitary housing that is affordable and accessible for households below 80% of area median income. Five C: Work collaboratively with affordable housing developers and providers to ensure affirmative fair marketing plans, and deconcentration policies are created and implemented. Five D: Support the Wycomico County Housing Authority to affirmatively further fair housing. This concludes the overview of the city's Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. The document is designed to act as a planning tool, providing the City of Salisbury with the necessary framework to strategically reduce any identified impediments to fair housing choice over the next five years, and continue to make modifications based on events and activities in the community during this time period. Both documents, the Consolidated Plan and the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, have been posted on the city website and may be viewed under the Housing and Community Development Department's page, Community Development section. I will now begin the portion of this hearing devoted to providing an update on the status of open CDBG projects and projects that concluded within the last year. In program year 2020, the city received COVID relief allocations under the CDBG CB1 and CDBG CB3 programs. The CDBG CB1 projects, City of Salisbury Translation Services for Critical COVID-19 Information and Updates. Funding under this was provided for the translation and printing of COVID-19 health and safety informational materials in other languages and/or sign language interpretation services for verbal public presentations as needed. Due to the slowdown of COVID-related need, this project has concluded. City of Salisbury COVID-19 Critical Need Supplies for Low-Moderate Income Residents. Types of items provided included food, PPE, hand sanitizer, and antibacterial soap. Due to the post-pandemic reduction in need for these supplies, this project has concluded. CDBG CB3 projects, Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services COVID-19 Rental Mortgage Assistance Program. This project has ended as applicants are no longer able to document a COVID-related loss of income now that we are post-pandemic. A total of 17 households were assisted through the CDBG CB3 portion of this funding. In program year 2021, the following projects were funded through CDBG. Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services Homebuyer Assistance Grants. This project is underway. Six households have been assisted to date. City of Salisbury Truett Street Community Center Rehabilitation and Expansion. The exterior build of the community center was completed in January 2023. The city is currently in process of completing the interior build-out and has executed contracts for the plumbing, electrical, HVAC, concrete flooring, insulation, drywall, and framing. The flooring and outdoor plumbing is complete, and the electrical and HVAC work are scheduled to begin within the next two weeks. In program year 2022, the following projects were funded through CDBG. Waterside Park Improvements. Parking Lot Installation and Stormwater Improvements were completed in October 2023, utilizing 2019 Community Parks and Playgrounds funding. The environmental review for the installation of restrooms and a pavilion will be complete in six weeks. This project will enter the contractor procurement process upon release of funds. In program year 2023, the following projects were funded through CDBG. Low-Moderate Sidewalk Construction and Pedestrian Improvements. This project will provide funds to continue the construction of sidewalks and/or ADA accessibility ramps, crosswalks, and signal lamps in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods where none currently exist. The environmental review for this project will be complete in six weeks, and the project will enter into the procurement phase upon release of funds. City of Salisbury Homeless Services Intensive Case Manager. The city's Department of Housing and Community Development secured other funding for homeless case management, eliminating the need for the CDBG allocation. An action plan amendment will be executed to reallocate this funding to another qualified project. Ann Street Village Construction and Rehabilitation. The city's Department of Housing and Community Development completed construction of the Ann Street facilities utilizing other funding sources, eliminating the need for the CDBG funding allocation. An action plan amendment will be executed to reallocate this funding to another qualified I would now like to open up the floor for comments from the public concerning the community development needs of the City of Salisbury. As with all of our CDBG public hearings, this hearing is being televised on PAC 14. So if you're interested in commenting on your views on the community development needs of the city, please go to the podium or this table, identify yourself, and be sure to speak directly into the microphone so that the audience watching at home will be able to hear you.
Ready?
Yes.
Hello, City of Salisbury, and folks watching PAC 14. I'm Ollie Heligoss. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, and I wanted to provide a little bit of insight and comments on the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. One of the things that I hear sometimes out in the community when people are commenting about the condition of homes, they wonder, you know, they make assumptions like, why would a homeowner let the house get this far gone? You know, I can't believe they're not taking care of their house, or what have you. So on page 89 of the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, it outlines through an analysis from HMDA, which is an analysis from HMDA, which is data that comes from all the mortgage lenders. So that would be any mortgage lender, say, one that's online, a local bank, or what have you. They, they are required by the federal government to provide information about the loans that they originate, the loans that they deny, the loans that they fund, and the value of those. So in 2022, 117 Salisbury households applied for home improvement loans. They wanted to fix their homes, 117. Only 10 were actually approved and had their loan request funded, 10 out of 117. 96 were actually denied. And today I had a meeting with some bankers, and I mentioned these statistics, and they said they weren't surprised. Unfortunately, when older adults retire, it's more difficult for them to get a home equity line of credit or a second mortgage because they don't have the income to support the repayment of that loan. That is why our agency specifically applied for the CDBG funding for this year, and while we are very excited to be moving forward upon HUD approval, 145,000 is just scratches the surface on what is needed. Currently, we have our, when we applied, we had 17 households in the city limits that needed critical home repairs. Now we have 25, at, at least. We have 45 applicants that are in the 21801 and 21804 ZIP codes. So the need for, for home improvement and, and home renovation loans and funding from the city is, is greater than ever. And I'm also, so with that, I'll just leave it at that. Moving on to the plans that the city has for addressing all of the different needs, I would recommend a task force that can assist the city on creating specific action plans with dates and, you know, how are we going to move forward all of these great ideas and plans over the next five years? I'd like to be a part of the solution, and, and I'm excited for the future. I'd also like to encourage the city to look into the home investment partnerships, its home funds. In the, in one of the documents, it states that the city has no intent to apply for home funds over the next five years, and that is a missed opportunity. And I would like to encourage the city to revisit that. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is James Yamakawa, Chair of the Wycomico NWCPS Housing and Economic Development Committee. I want to reiterate what Molly just talked about on page 68 of the draft of the 2024 Analysis, is that, again, City Salisbury is not a home entitlement city, and is not planning on becoming one over the next five years. A bit more about that finding online. The Home Investment Partnership Program is a federal program that provides formula grants to states and localities that communities use, often in partnership with local nonprofit groups, to fund a wide range of activities including building, buying, and/or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership, or providing direct rental assistance to low income people. Home is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low income households. In addition to potentially helping with the lack of affordable housing and the problem of increasing rents, one aspect of the home program that could be beneficial to the community would be the ability for current residents to be able to improve and keep their current homes. According to the data starting on page 88, particularly the racial ethnic breakdown of home improvement loans found on page 93, there seems to be some disparity in certain groups being able to access these loans. And I'm hoping I got the numbers right. Out of 1,218 home improvement loans applied for by white residents, 422 applications were denied, which means they had a roughly 65% approval rate. Now, out of 157 home improvement loans applied for by black residents, next largest racial, racial demographic, 94 were denied, which translates to only a 40% approval rate. Hispanic residents, next highest demographic, had a slightly better approval rate of 45%. And Asians, being the smallest demographic, had an approval rate of around 80%. According to the data presented in this graph, the disparity in numbers of applications and percentages of approval, approved is also apparent in the FHA, RHS, and conventional loans as well. We at the Wycomico NWCP are asking why the city of Salisbury chooses not to apply for funds that would serve those who are in greatest need in our community, and by extension benefiting, benefiting us all in the long term. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gurney El York Jr. I live at 1009 East Sher Street. I am a military veteran and a retired correction officer. There's things that I can't understand because when a person, as we are seniors in the community, you have a lot of people that are paying for a homeowner's insurance, and then when there's damage done to your house, because look where you live at. We have storms, everything, all the time, half of Salisbury is flooded all the time. But when you reach out to homeowner's insurance to, to have your house fixed, you know what they say? We don't fix that. So myself, I reached out to Habitat, Neighborhood Home Services, right? And been blessed that they're willing to work with me with the things that I need to get done. I've had three or four different roofing companies come out, even some of the big names, come and look at my damage to my house. You know what they say? Oh, we don't do that. So why am I paying for all this? And I'm a senior citizen, and, and at the same time, you've got people from the city coming around, looking at if your grass ain't cut, they're gonna cut it, and then call you or leave a note in your, in your mailbox saying you owe us $200 because we cut your grass. But see, they're not checking before they cut the grass to see what the senior is going through. You know, did his lawnmower break down yesterday? Did, does he have a disability where he can't? Because if you get this younger generation out there to see if they'll cut your grass, they wanna, they wanna charge you a million dollars for just to cut a little bit of grass, or do a little bit of weed work, right? So my concern is, the seniors there are, you know, we're only on a fixed income, right? And, and I can't pay a million dollar for somebody to keep cutting my grass, or help me try to do repairs that I gotta spend out of my pocket, you know? So, and, and my experience in my neighborhood, because I live on Church Street, and I live at the other end towards the elementary school, and I'm one of the people that I try to look out for other people. If I see somebody needs their grass cut, I try to help them. Or if they got weeds growing, try to help them. Or they need groceries put in their house, I try to help them, you know? And, and I'm from the older generation too. So my concern is, you know, and I know it's gonna take a lot, because Church Street is one of your main streets in Salisbury. They consider that an emergency route to get where they gotta go, just in case a house catches on fire, cops, you know, have to do what they gotta do, and, you know, you got no parking on Church Street. So a lot of things are a little bit different, but if you go to the government building and look at what Church Street looks, still look like, you'd, you'd be surprised how big a difference it is. So I'm just a concerned citizen, if you and, and letting, letting the city know that there's things that are going on, instead of people handing out fines for cutting grass or other codes that you got to violate, right? You know, people need to reach out and say, well, what, what's going on with this household? You know, ask questions. Don't just cut their grass for them, because they might not be able to, you know? So I'm just concerned citizen, like, like, like a lot of us seniors are, so, you know, I just wanted to express how I feel. Thank you so much for inviting me to come.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that has comments?
Good evening. Cheryl Meadows with Salisbury, excuse me, Neighborhood Housing Services. I would like to echo some of Molly's comments about the need for rehab programs. One of the impediments that wasn't listed is the programs themselves. Some of the restrictions are so tight, it's hard for people to qualify. I know a lot of the people we serve live in older homes in the city of Salisbury, and the amount that you can spend per unit in CDBG funds just isn't enough to take care of all the repairs that are needed. So we're constantly trying to layer different grant programs together to serve a family. So I know there's really nothing you can do about the guidelines because they are HUD guidelines, but sometimes, you know, the requirement to have three bids is difficult, and sometimes there are emergency situations that it would be nice if you could just contact one contractor that you've had, you know, a lot of experience with, that you know will go, do a good job and get that repair taken care of. I think there is a great need for other funding sources that don't have so many restrictions on them. But again, like Habitat, we are very appreciative of the CDBG funds. There's gonna be, you know, seven to 10 people that are gonna have their homes fixed up that otherwise would not be able to. Thank you, and I appreciate all the work that you have put into these documents. I know you put a lot of time and effort into it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I have to thank Urban Design Ventures for that. Unfortunately, they were not able to attend, but yes, it, it's been a lot put into it and a lot of stakeholder meetings.
Can I make one more comment? Okay, I have one more comment, and when you said that you had some money that you have to reallocate from a previous year, I wanted to suggest that since I, I believe that Salisbury Neighborhood Housing is now out of down payment assistance and closing cost assistance, and we have partner families that really need that, perhaps that could be an option.
Anybody else? Okay, I very much appreciate everybody's participation, and at this time, we will conclude today's public hearing. If you do have any questions concerning the CDBG planning process, you can contact me, Joellen Beinam, at the City Finance Department by calling 667-264-0915, or by emailing me at jbeinam@salisbury.md. Thanks to everybody for coming, and we'll, we'll adjourn at this time. Thank you.